Good evening and welcome to the City of Antioch Planning Commission Meeting of October 1st, 2025. It is 6:30 PM and I'm calling the meeting to order. Kitty, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you Chair Weber. Commissioner Spiker?
Present.
Commissioner Sumon?
Present.
Commissioner Martin?
Present.
Commissioner Riley is absent. Commissioner Perez? Vice Chairperson Jones?
Present.
Chairperson Webster- Weber?
Present.
We have a quorum at 6:30 PM with Commissioners Riley and Perez absent at roll call.
Thank you Kitty. Please join the Commission for their Pledge of Allegiance. For persons desiring to address the Commission on an item that is on the agenda, please note that each speaker is limited to three minutes. The Brown Act limits the Commission's ability to discuss or respond to items that are not on the agenda. Please fill out a speaker card and place it in the speaker tray. Staff, are there any public comments on non-agendized items?
None received. And for the record, Commissioner Perez arrived at 6:31 PM.
Thank you Kitty. Alright, I'm now closing the public comment period. That brings us to our continued regular item 5-1, Appeal of Cruise America Home Occupation Use Permit and Business License Denied at 2425 Willow Lane. The appellant Nanette Johnson has appealed the City of Antioch's administrative denial of a home occupation use permit and business license application for a Cruise America recreational vehicle rental business at 2425 Willow Avenue. The city denied the application on the grounds that it does not meet the current zoning code and the home occupation use permit requirements. May we have a staff presentation, please?
Yeah, good evening Commissioners. At the September 17th, 2025 meeting, the Planning Commission heard the appeal of staff's decision to deny the Cruise America business license and home occupation use permit at 2425 Willow Avenue. The Commission then voted to support the appeal and allow the business to operate. The attached resolution contains the requirements the Planning Commission and the appellant agreed to at that meeting. Staff recommends that the Commission adopt the resolution in the staff report. Thank you.
Okay, for anyone who'd like to speak on this, I will now open the comment period. City staff, please proceed with identifying the speakers. We'll have three minutes to address the Commission. Any public comments?
We have received no public comment cards, but I see somebody in the audience that wishes to speak on the item.
Just to step in, we could give the appellant 10 minutes if they want to speak.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Tyler Johnston and I'm here speaking on behalf of the property owner Nanette Johnston. I would like to start out by thanking you for the opportunity to speak tonight and we greatly appreciate your decision at the last meeting to support our appeal and allow the Cruise America business to continue operating. Additionally, I'd like to thank city staff for their work in communication drafting the resolution. We are fully committed to meeting all of the conditions outlined in the resolution presented tonight. We would ask that a slight change be made to the last line in the resolution. We just want to add on the end of it as specifically set forth herein. We propose the suggesting to the wording to reflect that our appeal will be upheld if Cruise America business and property meet the conditions you set in the resolution. In conclusion, we are fully committed to implementing all required conditions. We appreciate the Commission's guidance and support in continuing this legal non-conforming use and respectfully request that the minor change be made. Thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I've received no additional public comment. Oh, I see somebody in the audience that wishes to speak?
Thank you. First clerical for the city. City is making its changes to its city website. The meeting that you referenced, there is no public agenda or minutes on the city's website accessible to the community. So I do not know what transpired at the last meeting. But here today, also noticing was also changed, so I'm not being noticed on any of the agendas coming out as well. I'm a little confused though because the city has a zoning code and a land use map. You have a non-conforming use and then you have a separate business entity that draws a separate business license and is a separate business but falls under the same non-conforming use? I'm curious how that plays out because the intent of updating your zoning code is to address those historic non-conforming needs and then to create a comprehensive plan going forward. And so while I support this business being here in the city and the operations, we literally have on the agenda, the same agenda, an item that is just around the corner from this property and is going to be operating. These residents are going to be adjacent to this business. And the issue with that zoning code is that this area was not identified with this zoning need because there is not sufficient infrastructure in the area. The site is not set up appropriately. And I was a bit confused when I looked on the city's website at those business licenses and when they were in effect because on the city's website, the last business license shows 2022, but I rented an RV there last year. And so how do we have an item today that just previously applied for a home occupation use permit and a business license in a non-conforming zone that is working to stay in that same zone but has been historically operating in that zone? If you go on that national website, they brand the City of Antioch in that location. What is the point in having a process? What is the point in creating a zoning code? What is the point of you all being here if we're just going to continue to allow things to happen? With the last 15 seconds, I would like to say this is not an appropriate space or use. The paperwork does not reflect a right process and the city should better spend their time trying to find an appropriate place for this business to stay in Antioch and operate. Thank you.
I will now close the public comment period for this item and put it back before the Commission for discussion.
Yes, so I had the same concerns as the public comment. And I do have, well, this is on the agenda today, so I will address this today. For the... What is stopping them from coming back in five years and wanting to do, sell, rent RV or boats? You know what I'm saying? Because right now, we're agreeing that they can operate the U-Haul and the RV. They were doing that already prior to us approving. So is there anything in this that's like says, this is it? You're not expanding, you're not going to come back and say legal non-conforming for RVs or, I mean not RVs obviously, but boats or quads or trailers or tractors? So is there anything that they, is there going to be another appeal in five years because they want to add something different? I want to make sure that it stops here, I guess is the question.
Does it look a little bit to the attorney on the wording exactly?
Because we're making an exception to the rule, but I don't want to keep pushing it further and further.
Sure, so at the last meeting, the Commission decided this was a legal continuation of a legal non-conforming use by the operation of the Cruise America business. And our discussion centered on certain conditions that needed to be met in accordance with the updated home occupancy use ordinance. And so adopting this resolution would ensure that operation of this new Cruise America business would adhere to these new standards under the updated hoop ordinance. Do you want to add anything to that?
So they couldn't come back and say, oh, we're grandfathered in to, because it has four wheels? Like, because that's kind of what happened this time. They appealed it because it was a similar business. We agreed that it was a similar business, but I don't want it to keep continuing on in that manner. And I'm not sure that this, and I don't think we addressed it last time, so that's our fault because we didn't think about it.
If there was an instance down the road where this property sought to bring in a whole entirely new business, the Commission is free to say this is no longer a continuation of a legal non-conforming use and then deny the operation of that new, of that new business. But that's speaking hypothetical. At the last meeting and looking through this updated resolution, it seems pretty clear to me that it's very specific to operated, operation of this Cruise America business and we set forth conditions to ensure that this new business adheres to the updated hoop ordinance.
Okay, and then my next question is, is there any legal ramifications to adding the line that the applicant wanted to add or change to it? I'm assuming that you guys already looked at it, city attorneys looked at it and we should keep it as is, but I just want to...
So my understanding was, if I heard correctly, was the sought after change was at the ends, now therefore be it resolved line for it as specifically set forth therein? Is that, is that correct? Okay.
And if we need time to answer that question, then I'd rather have the time to answer that question as opposed to having you try to figure it out right now because this came two weeks early in the first place. So if we have to push it back, then that's, we were expecting it in 30 days, we got it in two weeks, so.
Yeah, I mean, look, just the insertion of that phrase, I'm not sure quite what it's clarifying or adding? If there's, if you want to come up and present more of a commentary on that?
So in that line, it says that subject to the appellant taking appropriate action to align with Antioch Municipal Code 9-5.901 Home Occupation Use Permit, and our fear is that later down the road, the city could come and say that we don't align with the home occupation use permit because we don't align with the exact code in there. So we're just asking for that as specifically set forth herein to show that we do align if we meet those conditions that you are, that's presented in the resolution.
So I think from the updated, my sense from looking at this updated resolution is that the discussion last couple of weeks ago centered on very specific conditions that the Cruise America business would need to adhere to. And it's clearly outlined here and have every confidence that the entire department would work in good faith to ensure that it wouldn't be piling on new conditions later on that aren't set forth in this updated resolution. So I would recommend that if the Commission's good with it, they could go ahead and adopt this, this updated resolution tonight unless there are any outstanding concerns about that.
Just like to ask one question. How long has that business been operating as what it is now under that hoop?
I think it was 2012 or 2022.
Which business, the Cruise America or the?
The U-Haul.
The U-Haul, so I believe 1996, was that eight?
The hoop for U-Haul was approved in 2002.
2002, sorry, yeah.
But another, the custom bunk beds business started in 1998 and is licensed on the property.
I was simply asking that question to make the point that this hoop and this allowance for this business started long before anybody, well, most of whom is sitting here now in this Commission was even a part of this. And it's not my agenda to deter family-run businesses from continuing on here, especially when they've demonstrated commitment to the community and dedication to providing a service for the community for an extended period of time. And so that is sort of why we made the decision to add to this process to help come up with a win-win and amicable solution for the, the topic. Do, sure.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. From my perspective though, the, the centered point here was that the original hoop, the general plan, didn't really give some concrete definitions of what the ongoing life or realistic life of a business actually is and what it comprises of. I mean, my thought process here would be that the general plan should be, you know, over time, what gets essentially adopted by that particular piece of property? That, you know, when the natural life of the business were to finally expire, that it would revert, the use of that property would revert back to what the general plan envisioned for that property. And that's, was absent from anything, everything that we saw in the paperwork, right? There was no definition that said that, you know, there was a period of time and by which, you know, this, this business should end and conform back to, you know, the definition or the guidance provided by the, the general plan. So based on that is, and the kind of vagueness of, you know, similar businesses, you know, we all kind of determined, myself included, that it was similar enough that it should be essentially continued to be grandfathered in. But we're also kind of felt, I felt personally, kind of like my hands are tied behind my back. Like I didn't have the option to say no. You know, that they don't, based upon the rules and the way it was, the paperwork was submitted, there's nothing there that says that we can say no. You know, as long as it basically adheres to the conditions of the original hoop that basically we have, are essentially forced to approve it. So I don't know what, what the solution is for that, if that's, you know, longer term. We're talking about potentially updating the general plan. You know, can we fix that as a city council, planning commission? You know, process of review of the general plan? Can we, can we fix loopholes like that in the future to help guide us in the decision-making process?
But just, this is my thought process, but I, I think that the denial of the approval was your ability to say no. I originally had said no and was not willing to approve the prop, the change in the property because of the fact that they were operating under that guideline anyways, because of the fact that they continued to do that for years and just because they didn't get caught. However, after having our conversation and, and seeing how the similar businesses is and wanting to bring business to Antioch and keep businesses to Antioch, that's why I made the suggestion to make those recommendations to change. But the, your ability to say no was the denial of the project and staff recommendation. So that's just my two cents, but we're here now. I honestly, I kind of regret my decision after thinking about it. But we're here, I said yes, and so now we're moving forward.
Like one of the questions said, what if they come back in few months, a year and say we are adding another business? Like what Krishna said, what would be, what would we do? Is there anything we can do to stop it? Or add boats or any other vehicles, trucks maybe, I don't know? So can you limit it or is it going to continue? Because they are in the similar business, so where do we say no?
And that's what most of the discussion centered on a couple of weeks ago was, was this, does this classify as a continuation of a legal non-conforming use? So the Commission found it was a similar enough business to classify this as a continuing use and therefore adopted an updated, or came to a discussion to amend the resolution to uphold the appeal. If there are concerns though, the Commission is free to either uphold the resolution or deny the resolution. It's, it's well within your authority. And then as, as mentioned earlier, if there is a situation later down the road where you feel like a new, if there is a new business that's sought to be built on this, on this property, the Commission has the authority to say this is not a continuation of a legal non-conforming use and therefore deny a permit, a hoop permit for, for that new business. But again, that's a complete, that is a hypothetical, hypothetical situation. So if that does occur down the road, the Commission is free to deny a hoop permit.
Are you guys able to read what the conditions are that were established, that we're approving? Can you guys kind of go over that whole thing?
You mean what's in the resolution in the staff report? Reread it or what's the specific?
Well, I just, to be transparent, because I think some people, particularly in, like the audience didn't have, they weren't able to access this.
Yeah, so we can read it?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the first, number one is by December 1st, 2025, repairing the fence on the west side of the property. But number two is by December 1st, 2025, develop a planting plan for the planting and landscaping on the west side of the property, including irrigation and plant selections that will provide screening at the time of planting and provide the plan to the Director of Community Economic Development. Now is the director, after review and approval of the planting plan. The planting shall be installed within 90 days unless an extension is granted for good cause by the director. Number three, by December 1st, 2025, install privacy screening, including possible fencing slats. Prior to installing the screen, the appellant shall make a good faith effort to coordinate with the neighboring property owners in a mutually agreed upon solution. Number four, allowing no more than a maximum of 15 RVs to be stationed on the property at any one time. Number five, by November 1st, 2025, limiting use of the space on the south side of the property to allow for adequate emergency vehicle access to at least 20 feet. Number six, by November 1st, 2025, installing appropriate signage on the south side of the property, clearly design a emergency vehicle access to the satisfaction of the director. And number seven, six months after the completion of all items, the appellant shall provide the director a performance update report showing ongoing compliance with all the above requirements.
If I'm not mistaken, wasn't the appellant willing to agree to 12? Wasn't it supposed to be 12 was the number of RVs that were supposed to be there?
The discussion was 15, so. And we, as the staff report said, shared this with the opponent. So it was 15 and that's what was in the record.
I think my concern is there's no meeting notes also. I know that I, I made the decision last time to, and I'm the one who motioned for these changes. However, I, I think, I don't know, I'm torn, honestly, so I don't know.
Another thing I'll just quickly add is, because it does sound like there is a bit of a divide in terms of whether to move forward. If there is no majority of the body to vote for or against the resolution, then no action will be taken and this would be tabled for further, another future.
And then it goes back to the appeal process because they appealed it, right? And so we said, instead of appealing it, make these conditional changes because it's similar in nature. If we denied this changes, even though we did agree to make this happen, if we denied that today, it, I, does it go back to the appeal process?
So you need a, a majority of the, of the bodies, so four votes, to either uphold the resolution, uphold the appeal and move forward with this resolution or deny the appeal. And therefore cannot deny the, deny this resolution. But if it's, if there's, if there's not a majority either way, then it's tabled.
And then it would go back to city council to make the decision? Because last time they, they appealed it. If we were to approve that, then it would go to city council. If we tonight deny it, then with a majority, then it goes back to us again to deny or approve the?
I believe it, there would be, it would be an appeal to the city council.
Okay.
If someone made that appeal, but wouldn't, should we come back with, if they weren't moving forward with this resolution, should we come back again with a?
Visit it at a future meeting?
A res, the resolution we had the first time?
Yeah.
Is that the best course, I guess?
If the Commission feels that at a future meeting, it's best to revisit this resolution. If there's, if we feel like we need to table this for a future meeting to amend the resolution, if you all feel that there's additional discussion that needs to be had, then you could all vote for that as well. But again, there needs to be a majority of the body.
Okay. Okay, those are all my questions. I have two questions. I know it says on section four that we're maximum of 15 RVs. How is the city going to monitor to make sure they're complying with the 15 RVs? Because I guess in the first, the whole thing was you guys got a anonymous call that they weren't compliant. So now my question is, how will we make sure we'll continue to be compliant with those 15 RVs?
Yeah, so that's why we did have the six-month performance update report as a way of a check-in. Typically throughout the city, we aren't constantly checking on every condition of approval that you all, you know, maintain compliance. But if there were to be ongoing complaints, then code enforcement would be going out there. But that's why we did try and build in this. But that's why we did try and build in this six month, um, update report, but if you wanted it to say something like ongoing, perhaps?
I think ongoing would be best if the, all commissioners agreed on that. And then additionally, where it says for the emergency vehicle access of at least 20 feet on section five, um, has the fire district reviewed the site plan to confirm that when the RVs are parked, that there is 20 feet of clearance?
No, so the fire district hasn't gone out there, but that's part of the compliance that we would confirm, but that would be a city compliance standard. So the fire district's a separate agency, so this is something that city staff is confirming compliance with, of the 20 feet.
I thought during our discussion also, there was going to be something, um, added that required the applicant to keep the RVs in the rear of the residence, similar to what was going to happen with the U-Hauls. Like it wasn't going to be that they could have, um, the RVs in plain sight of the residence?
So that at one point that was a discussion item, but that wasn't what was in the final motion? So what was discussed was the fencing and then in the staff report, there's the discussion about some of the screening on, or the, um, uh, sorry, that the, about the fencing, um, but the west side of the property, which is the front, that was what was discussed, was the planting plan.
I will say this, and I'm sure that the other commissioners are feeling the same way, and I know that there were some commissioners who weren't present, so they would have to abstain tonight. But it does feel as if this is somewhat being like placed at us very quickly when we believed there was going to be like a month's time that it would take to create some sort of resolution. So my feeling on the matter is that, um, we need to be more transparent and make it so that anybody else in the public who would maybe like to, uh, participate in the discussion could also have that. That's just my thoughts on that.
I guess as a commission, if you needed, what, um, did you feel this resolution didn't contain that was in the original motion that would need to be changed?
Well, like that, that piece of it where, I don't know, maybe in our discussion when we were all brainstorming, we kind of got away from the fact that the RVs are, you know, to be, or the idea of RVs being kept in the same premises, like in the rear of the business where all of the U-Hauls are being stored, rather than like in the front of the property. We discussed that and then it kind of, the conversation turned to, you know, hedges and we started talking about planting trees and then fixing fencing. And so it sort of seems to me like more of what maybe the complaint was about is the fact that you could see, even though the complaint was very vague, it seemed like more of the issue was that they could see that, um, what was being, like the business that was being operated, like it was very, um, apparent that there was a RV rental happening there, is what it seemed to be.
So I guess I would look to the attorney again, putting him on the spot tonight on this resu, how they would then amend to add more conditions to the resolution considering?
Yeah, my, my concern is that this can be an ongoing process of continuing to add new conditions, it can get really messy. My recommendation would be either, uh, and I understand there were some absences last week and you do need a majority of the body to move forward with either upholding the appeal or simply just denying, uh, the resolution as it stands tonight. And then therefore, uh, if you were, if the majority of the body denied it, uh, the resolution, then the appelleant has the, the opportunity to then appeal to the city council and the city council would decide.
I'd like to make a motion to deny, um, the, um, the, as it stands today.
Do we have a motion on? Item five dash one?
I second.
Okay, so if I could ask a question on, okay, we are, the motion is to deny this agreement. Okay.
Kitty, roll call vote?
Thank you, Chairperson Weber. Commissioner Spiker?
Uh, no.
Commissioner, Commissioner Sumon?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Abstain as I was absent at the last meeting.
Commissioner Perez?
Nay.
Uh, Vice Chairperson Jones?
Aye, is the correct, aye, okay.
Chairperson Weber?
No.
The motion failed with two no's, two yeses, three no's, two yeses, and one abstention. So do you have to take another motion for approval or now what?
There are, there's no majority, there, yeah, so there's, there's, there hasn't been a majority vote either way. You need four votes to either uphold the appeal or deny the appeal. So my understanding was there's two yays and two no's and then one abstention?
There were three no's, two yeses, and one abstention.
Okay. You need four votes either way to either uphold or deny the appeal.
So now it goes to city council, let them decide?
Well, yes, so no, no action in this instance has been taken.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll need, it's, sounds like they'll, they'll need to appeal to city council, but yeah, uh, we'll confirm that since no action has been taken on this matter. And we'll let, we'll communicate clearly that with the process with the appelleant.
Okay, moving forward to our next item, public hearing, item six dash one, Vineyard Crossings, PD 2024 dash 0002, intersection of Phillips Lane and Oakley Road. Bright Sky Residential is requesting approval of a vesting tentative map for condominium purposes, design review, and a density bonus application for development of a new residential subdivision with 137 residential units at Oakley Road west of Phillips Lane and east of Hickory Nut Street. The project includes 45 single-family homes, 40 accessory dwelling units, and 52 duplex units, along with a recreation center for residents and other amenities. The site is zoned PD planned development district with general plan designations of low, medium-low density residential and medium-density residential, and is currently a vineyard. The applicant is proposing to designate 10% of base units or 13 units total as affordable to low-income households in order to obtain a density bonus of six additional units as well as waivers from certain development standards in accordance with state density bonus law. Proposed site work includes construction of stormwater infrastructure, new private streets and walkways, utilities, lighting, landscaping, and frontage improvements to Oakley Road. May we have a staff presentation, please?
Good evening, commissioners. Nathan Tinclair, associate planner, I'll be presenting the entitlements to you for the Vineyard Crossing residential project. There are three recommendations to the city council that we're asking you to consider tonight. Approval of a vesting tentative map that would subdivide the project's site into 71 individual lots with 137 residential units. The map would be for potential future condominium purposes on a portion of the site, creating 52 condominium light, uh, condominium lots. Um, we're, um, asking you to consider recommending approval of the design review confirming the project's consistency with applicable objective design standards, as well as approval of a density bonus application, designating 10% of base units for low-income households in exchange for additional units and waivers from certain development standards. The project's site consists of two parcels totaling approximately 14.6 acres located northwest of the intersection of Phillips Lane and Oakley Road. Um, the project's site is, currently contains an existing vineyard, electrical transmission towers, and PG&E infrastructure, and a paved walking trail. The project's site is part of the Almond Ridge South Planned Development District that was entitled in 1991, but only partially developed since that time. As part of the city's 2003 general plan, the western project parcel was designated medium-low density residential with up to six dwelling units per acre permitted, and the eastern project parcel was designated medium-density residential with up to 10 dwelling units per acre permitted. Both parcels are zoned PD planned development district with the original final development plan envisioning a single-family development. State of California housing law provides that a proposed housing project is not inconsistent with zoning standards, and it does not require a rezoning if the proposed project is consistent with objective general plan standards, um, which must be applied to facilitate development at the density allowed at the site by the general plan and as proposed by the housing develop, excuse me, housing development project. And so therefore, while the project's site, um, does not conform to the previously adopted planned development zoning standards, um, around things such as lot size and setbacks, it is consistent with the density established in the general plan, um, and therefore, per state law, a rezoning would not be required to develop this project. Um, and as a reminder, we're evaluating this project for compliance with objective standards only, and waivers from development standards provided via a density bonus do not make a project inconsistent with objective standards. So just to emphasize that, per, per state housing law, the city, um, is quite limited in its ability to deny, um, such a housing project. So again, the project includes 45 single-family homes, um, 40 accessory dwelling units, which are on lots with single-family homes, as well as 52 duplex units. Um, the applicant has stated that they intend to own and operate the development as rental housing after completion. The project also includes private streets and sidewalks, a small recreation center adjacent to a pool and children's play area, landscaping, utilities, stormwater control infrastructure, and frontage improvements along Oakley Road. 13 of the project's base units, 10%, um, which are proposed to be accessory dwelling units, would be deed restricted as affordable to low-income households earning 60% of area median income, um, in order to obtain an up to 20% density bonus of additional units. The bonus units are being applied to the duplex parcel, um, so that it meets the density permitted, uh, under the general plan. And additionally, the density bonus provides that the applicant, um, may, um, take advantage of waivers from development standards, um, which is relaxing or overall waiving of a standard that would prevent a project from being built at the density proposed and allowed. Um, the applicant is claiming eight waivers, um, including relief from lot sizes and setbacks from the original planned development approvals, an alternative street width, um, and relief from, uh, certain single-family and missing middle zoning, um, excuse me, objective design standards such as garage width and building entryway design and orientation. Um, this slide shows the proposed site plan for the project. Um, again, the project's map would divide the project into 71 residential lots, along with various common parcels like roadways, landscaping, and amenities. Um, the project provides a total of 408 parking spots. This includes 194 spots within two-car garages for each single-family home and duplex unit, um, 130 spots within the single-family home, um, and, um, additional driveways for the accessory dwelling units, and 84 spots on street. Projects that receive a density bonus are entitled to reduced parking standards, um, with a maximum parking requirement of one and a half parking spaces for a three-bedroom unit. Um, the project as proposed exceeds both what is required for a density bonus project and also, um, meets the number of spots that would be required, um, under standard municipal code requirements as well. So just showing some of the design of the, um, of the homes. So, um, these are the single-family homes and an example of the accessory dwelling unit shown on the screen. Um, the project offers three different single-family floor plans, um, and three different architectural styles, traditional farmhouse and craftsman. The designs feature roof and facade variations and projections, recessed entryways, gables, shutters, window sills, trim, and other features in accordance with Antioch's single-family and missing middle objective design standards. Um, the accessory dwelling unit, um, while not subject to the same, um, single-family and missing middle objective design standards, is designed to reference the, um, adjacent single-family homes. The applicant is also proposing, uh, two different duplex elevation styles with three different building floor plans, um, and the duplexes are designed to reference one larger home, um, which is in accordance with our missing middle design guidelines. Um, and the, um, image on the bottom of the screen is the proposed recreation center and leasing office, which also references the proposed architectural style of the development. Landscaping would be provided throughout the project's site. There'll be about, uh, three and a half acres of landscaping on the site, or about 25% of the total project area. There are currently eight trees on or adjacent to the project's site, and the developer will be removing six trees that meet the standard for an established or mature tree requiring, requiring replacement. Um, the six trees proposed to be removed are coastal live oak. The project, um, will plant approximately 300 trees, far surpassing the 12 that would be required as replacements for the protected trees proposed to be removed, um, and this includes California native species such as coastal live oak and island oak. The project features a central amenity parcel, um, with a pool, the small clubhouse rec center, and a children's play area. There's also a second amenity area, um, in the northeastern portion of the site, um, which includes an activity lawn for active and passive recreation, as well as benches and a pet waste station. Um, and the existing asphalt pathway, which runs along the northern portion of the project's site, will remain with development of the project. Um, front yards include a variety of shrub and tree species to beautify each residence, and rear yards include concrete patios and synthetic turf lawns to maximize usability. The project also includes an enhanced entryway at the Oakley Road entrance, featuring a monument sign, landscaped median, and landscaping on both sides of the street. The project's environmental review was performed, um, based on the SEQA guidelines, section 15183, community plan exemption, and this exemption allows that for a project which is consistent with an existing community plan or general plan for which an EIR was already certified, additional environmental review is not required, except as might be necessary to examine whether there are project-specific significant effects, um, that are peculiar to the project or site. Um, in order to evaluate whether there are any project-specific impacts, several technical analyses were prepared, including a transportation impact analysis, a technological, a technical biological report, farmland impact assessment, geotechnical investigation, and a phase one and limited phase two environmental site assessment. Um, and the analysis concluded that the proposed project would not result in any peculiar effects that would require further SEQA review. Several project-specific conditions are also proposed. While the project applicant has stated that they intend to operate the development as a rental community, um, given that they are seeking approval of a tentative map for condominium purposes that would allow each of the units to be sold individually, um, in the future, um, the project is being conditioned that a homeowners' associate, association must be established, um, to maintain the private streets, open space, and amenity parcels. Uh, the project is conditioned to require that the applicant enter into a covenant with the city to ensure the continued affordability of the designated affordable units as part of their density bonus application. I also wanted to note that the planning commission is required to approve, uh, the proposed private street names, which are within the project's conditions and are listed here on your screen. Um, these street names, uh, have been reviewed by, uh, city planning and engineering staff, as well as the Antioch Police Department. And then, um, lastly, there are some conditions of approval related to avoiding impacts to some animal species that have the potential to occur on-site, um, and this includes things like doing pre-construction surveys during bird nesting season, protecting species and nests, um, if found, and a requirement for training of construction staff. Um, and so to conclude, um, staff are recommending that the planning commission recommend city council approval of the vesting tentative map, design review, and density bonus. Um, I will note that we did receive approximately 10 letters expressing, um, opposition to the project, which, um, you have as part of your packet today. Um, and then just a, a final reminder that per state housing law, the city is highly restricted in its ability to deny housing projects, um, or condition them at a lower density if, um, consistent with applicable objective standards. Thank you very much, look forward to taking your questions.
Good evening, Chair Weber and Commissioners. My name is Jessica Hidari. I am the project manager representing the applicant Bright Sky Residential for the Vineyard Crossing project. Joining our team tonight, we have the developer and some of our amazing consultants who've helped bring our project to where it is today. Well, Nathan did a wonderful job covering many of the project details. I'd like to take a moment of time just to highlight some of the project benefits for the future residents and the City of Antioch. Vineyard Crossing is a unique build-to-rent community, offering a array of product types at different rent structures, and provides state-of-the-art amenities inclusive to all residents of the project. Here on the screen, you can see an amazing list of amenities and project benefits. As a result of our community outreach efforts, we heard — we added different access points to the existing multi-use trail at the north end of the project. We also added Wi-Fi to the rec building accessible for all the residents, as well as security cameras within the common areas. We've also reached out to the City of Antioch Police Department to participate in the Neighborhood Watch program. Here's another look at the site plan that Nathan showed earlier. You'll see the amenities are essential to all of the residents within the project. You will also see the existing vineyards and the PG&E land and easement areas that will remain. We will be doing offsite improvements like Nathan mentioned along Oakley, in addition to undergrounding the existing utility lines. While not required, we will also be undergrounding existing utility lines for the two non-owned parcels that are right there on Oakley. As I'm sure we're all aware, California is in a housing crisis. Only an estimated 15% to 17% can afford to buy a house in California right now. Our goal is to keep — is to provide much-needed housing here in Antioch and keep residents in Antioch. Our project will serve the missing middle and give workforce families an opportunity to rent a home without the costs and the burden of homeownership. I have a young family, and a project like this is ideal in our case, just as it is for many others. Vineyard Crossing will also provide — will also contribute towards the city's RENA numbers, which we're required to meet, as well as contribute to low-income housing here for Antioch. To wrap up this slide, and as mentioned earlier, we are SB 330 compliant, and I have Dana here to touch on that in just a second. So again, we are providing 13 ADUs for low-income housing, limited to households earning 60% of the area median income. As mentioned, all affordable units will have access to all the amenities within the project, and the deed restriction will remain for 55 years. If you're not familiar with Bright Sky Residential, I highly recommend you guys go on their website. I think you'd be highly impressed with the communities they build. And I think the City of Antioch will be proud to bring in another Bright Sky project here in Antioch. Bright Sky — Bright Sky — sorry. Excuse me. Bright Sky leads in the build-for-rent sector. They develop, own, and manage purpose-built communities here in California and in select markets nationwide. You might be familiar with the Laurel Ranch project here in Antioch, which consists of 216 two-story homes. They also have similar projects in Vacaville and Lathrop. Bright Sky is very involved with their project management company, ensuring high quality in operation. So what does this mean? It means a clean, well-maintained community. It means eyes on the community, and it means that the rules and regulations in the HOA will be upheld, the HOA that the city will approve. And really quick, just, I want to further highlight, rent versus buy. It's a unique opportunity here at Vineyard Crossing. Of course, housing affordability is an issue. The cost of a mortgage, interest rates, property taxes, insurance, repairs, and maintenance are very costly. Renting a single-family duplex or — a single-family detached duplex or ADU will provide a sense of homeownership with high-quality living standards, 24/7 onsite management, and access to amenities, like I mentioned before. Build-for-rent improves stability for the community. For instance, longer tenancies equal stronger neighborhoods, increased housing supply, and improved rental standards, as well as revitalizes underused land. With that, we hope you can support and approve our project. Before Dana Kennedy comes up here, I just want to acknowledge that we did receive and take to heart the letters received by the Gold Coast — Goldcrest community adjacent to us, and we did reach out in advance to engage with them, and we still want to listen to any comments or concerns. We'd also like to reserve any time to respond to public comment.
Good evening, Chair Weber, Commissioners. I'm Dana Kennedy, a land use attorney at Schartz &amp; Fries and counsel to the applicant. As Jessica said, we're grateful for staff's collaboration and support over the past many months. I just wanted to take a moment to remind the planning commission and the community of the legal setting for tonight's hearing. As Jessica said, and as you know, the State of California is in a deep housing crisis. The state legislature has responded in part by establishing laws that promote and protect housing development projects, including ADUs. Crucially, these state housing laws allow a local agency to disapprove or reduce the density of a qualifying housing project under only extremely limited circumstances. The Vineyard Crossing project qualifies for these protections. Nathan did a really good job of describing the protections of the state density bonus law, and the project also qualifies for the protections of the Housing Accountability Act. The commission's discretionary authority over the project is therefore significantly limited. We respectfully remind everyone here tonight that, under the HAA, the city cannot legally disapprove the project without finding a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety, which there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid. A specific adverse impact is defined to mean a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, identified, written, public health or safety standards that existed on the date the application was deemed complete. Vague unease about a pending project does not constitute a specific adverse impact. Other examples that do not meet the legal standard related to public health and safety include concerns about property values, the number of cars on the road, questions of neighborhood character, or whether the occupant of a home is a renter or a property owner. This project will not have a specific adverse impact upon public health or safety, and no evidence has been provided to the contrary, let alone the required preponderance of the evidence. As you know, case law explains that these findings are the only lawful means of disapproving a housing development project that complies with the city's applicable objective development standards, as this project does. Similarly, the proposed ADUs are not the subject of tonight's hearing. Both city and state law provide for ministerial review of proposed ADUs, meaning they cannot be the subject of an approval hearing, are not subject to SEQA, and are not subject to a public design review process. As you may be aware, the Department of Housing and Community Development is the body tasked by the state legislature with interpreting and enforcing the state housing laws. HCD reviewed the specifics of this project and confirmed that it qualifies for the protections I just described. We trust that the city will understand and comply with the HAA, the state density bonus law, and the state ADU laws, and approve the project as proposed. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sandra Harris. I am the Senior Vice President of Planning for Bright Sky Residential. The team has done a great job of highlighting the benefits of our proposed project. I just wanted to highlight a few things. At Bright Sky, we design, we develop, we construct, we lease out, and then we manage high-quality rental communities. We control about 3,000 throughout the United States in key markets. But there are two projects, local projects, that we have open, and I really encourage you to go visit those communities so you can get a feel. We have two projects, one in Lathrop, one in Vacaville. They're called Escala and Sierra Vista. If you visit there, you'll see products similar to what we're proposing here. You'll see our single-family product, the duplexes, the ADUs, even the recreational building will be very similar. I really encourage you to visit. When you visit, you'll see our upgraded interior unit finishes, onsite management, 24/7. We even have onsite personnel that reside on the property, professionally maintained, and we have resort-style amenities that Nathan has already highlighted. So please visit. You'll see we have clean, quiet communities where people are very happy to live. So my time is up. We're available for any questions. Thank you very much.
For anyone who'd like to speak on this, I will now open the comment period. City staff, please proceed with identifying the speakers. We'll have three minutes to address the commission.
I receive no public comment cards, but I see a gentleman from the audience who'd like to speak.
Thank you for your time. You know, it's interesting because I come before this body, and I come before council a lot and speak on housing in our city. And regionally, we understand the direction that the communities go, and the control that local agencies have, and the legislation that state passes, and things become siloed very quickly, and then they become chaotic. And out of that, it's hard to find a benefit that serves your community. Or I should say, rarely it's hard to find that. What's interesting here is that this project brings a housing type that is abundant in our community, but is also unreachable for a lot in our community, right? You look at the City of Antioch, and as I go through the current projects list, you see roughly 7,000 units at some stage in the planning process here in the city. And you have homes that are costing upwards of half a million to a million dollars. How do people afford these mortgages? How do people afford these down payments? How do they meet the creditworthiness? Well, it's getting into a housing model like this, sustaining, understanding what that homeownership, that personal stake feels like, growing their reserves, building their credit, and moving into a housing purchase model. And so all that is to say that I wholeheartedly support this development, and I ask that this developer continue to not just work with the City of Antioch, but other regions here, because it meets a need in our community that so many few have. How many families of five are crammed into an apartment because they can't find a single homeowner that'll rent to them? And now you have a professional leasing entity that can work with them and understanding their needs and elevating them. And so understanding that this will be entitled and maps drawn independently on these individual parcels, I ask the developer to, if they do eventually look at converting, open up potentially first-right options to the existing tenants, should they meet the criteria that is needed for homeownership and the setting there. But other than that, you know, I appreciate the developer and their commitment to our community and the beautiful product that they've brought. And to the existing community next door, while I support the developer in reaching out, I would say that that community was built within the last 24 months, and their residents next door probably maybe felt similar to them. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I see none.
All right. I'll put the item 6-1 back before the commission for discussion.
My first question would be to staff to explain the 18th Street near freeway as mentioned in the letters that we got, the half a dozen or so letters. What were they referring to? I have not heard anything about that.
Yes, so I believe, based on the letters, that they're referring to what we entitled as the AmCal Project and is now known, and I think labeled and marketed as the Antioch Family and Senior Apartments. That's at the corner of East 18th, there, right next to the freeway. So that is a new apartment building in town. I reached out to Antioch PD, and I spoke to a captain there about the calls for service. So he gave some general information to me and said that while there are quite a few calls there, there are a lot of units and a lot of people at a large apartment complex. So this captain felt that overall, the number of calls was comparable to other apartment complexes in the city, call ratio-wise, I guess, is how it would be put.
So how would that relate to what we are looking at tonight? I couldn't figure out the relationship. That's what I was going for.
Yeah, I don't believe that there is a relationship, and certainly, you know, the project before you is, you know, a new community. These were newer apartments, but beyond that, there's really not a relationship before you tonight that I would say is relevant.
Thank you for that explanation. My next question is, I was not aware, and I know you put it in your staff report, that you can apply the density bonus to a different area in a development. You say on page five, it says, "The applicant is utilizing the bonus units on the east parcel." I was surprised that that could be done. Is that part of state law, that they could do that, or it's okay?
My understanding is that if it's part of the same project, that's like a contiguous project, you can apply to separate parcels.
Okay.
Within the one development. And as the applicant mentioned, you know, the state did provide some guidance on this project, and certainly supported the use of the density bonus as is proposed.
So am I to understand that that gives him eight other units in the duplex section because there were 16 granted? Is that correct?
The 16 is the bonus. So there's 121 base units for the project. 10%, you always round up when using density bonus. So they would be entitled with — and 10% is the minimum for the low-income threshold. They would be entitled to up to a 20% density bonus, so that would be 25 units. They're only applying 16 of them to bring the east parcel into compliance with the density established in the general plan.
So since they are duplexes, that means that you only get eight houses, eight units, eight buildings out of that. Is that correct?
That — with this model, I think that would be accurate. It's based on unit numbers, not building numbers.
Okay.
So if they had chosen to do extra single-family homes, for example, it's all units, right? It's not — but in this case, I think that's accurate, how you described it.
Okay. You mentioned in your staff report about the applicant also has entitled to one concession. What type of concessions would you expect if he decides — or the applicant decides to come back, which you described that they'll have to come back for an additional hearing? What type of concessions would you expect?
So the concession is meant to be a deviation from a standard that is solely for the purpose of saving money, whereas a waiver is a deviation to bill at the density that you would be allowed to bill at, based on the density allowed with the density bonus. So it would be like a material change or some other treatment that would be specific to saving cost. There are limitations. You can't waive fees through a concession, so it would be limited to some type of design element. So it would be limited to some type of design element that would be a cost savings. And again, they would need to come back to amend their entitlement application since the waivers are part of what you and the city council would be approving.
My next question is, can you show me the location of the asphalt pathway that you referred to?
Sure.
I couldn't figure it out. I hate to say this, but I looked at that.
So if you see on here, so the northern 80 feet is, it's part of the project parcels, but it's an easement owned by PG&E with electrical lines. And so you can kind of see it runs along the very top.
Okay.
And then comes back around through here.
I assume that, but I don't like to be what the word means. You talk about the level of service for Hillcrest Avenue and other parts. And that they will be, they are currently operating at an unacceptable level. And this will only apply to a small percentage of the unacceptable level of F. How do we compensate for that if we don't have some sort of plan to improve these areas that are operating at level F if we keep approving projects? And you listed three or four different places where we have level of service F. So my question is, how do we compensate for that? Because it's just going to compound it.
I'm also going to look over to our engineer who can probably explain a little bit more clearly some traffic analysis concepts, I guess.
Hi, I'm Kevin Van Catwick with InterWest. I work with the engineering department here at the city. To answer your question, you ought to look at overall traffic and then you have to look at what's impacted by this development. And the overall traffic, as you know, on Hillcrest is pretty busy, pretty congested. And it's a conglomerate of, you know, all the projects that occurred in the city and the new projects surrounding the city and the area, all converging on that one street that causes a level of service F. And we've been working with the traffic engineers for some time and how to alleviate that. Sometimes it's a left-turn pocket, sometimes it's a right-turn pocket that will key that intersection to exceed the capacity. We call it level of service F because it doesn't queue all the way through. Sometimes it gets bottled up and then it queues back and it doesn't clean itself out. Like you see a normal intersection will glide through and clean itself out or, you know, everybody will get a chance to go through. But in level of service F, it just doesn't. It just, traffic moves and then it stops and it bottles up. And so you get that feeling like, oh man, there's a lot of traffic here. So, but where I'm going is this, is that every project contributes some more than others. And so getting into this traffic, in this situation, this project is very much removed from Hillcrest. It's a pretty long distance. I know our analysis show that it didn't really impact it that much, not significantly. The ambient traffic already existing in the city contributed more to the project. That's why there was no conditions on Hillcrest or any additional specific conditions on this project because it was negligible.
Still didn't answer what I was, I was hoping that some way we could figure out how to relieve the problem on Hillcrest Avenue. In other words, I know other places, you have a setup where developers will pay into a fund and then you take money out of that fund to improve what it is down the road. And I was just concerned whether or not this one would be contributing to a fund and apparently that is incorrect.
That's correct. The city commissioner Martin has not adopted a citywide traffic impact fee, a program to have such program. They do have other fees in the county that contribute to countywide facilities, but not specifically for city roads yet. They're looking at that, they've been studying it for a long time, but that's something that hasn't been implemented yet.
We'll have to encourage the council to come back with something like that.
Yeah, and also to tee off of what Mr. Van Catwick's saying is also, our general plan is hopefully an opportunity for some of that. More comprehensive planning as well.
You talk about clear vision zones and we may end up back with you up here. And your references, can you show me what you're referring to about clear vision zones? I think I understood where you were referring to and I believe it was in a particular view of one of the items in the printed material. I'll have to get down to where those are. But it's, in your, I think I saw what you were referring to in, come on Bob. In B13 of the staff report or maybe it was B15 of the staff report.
So B13 shows the correct site vision triangles. B13, you're correct about that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the red, the red lines on B13, the little red dashed lines at the intersections. There's the clear zone.
Just to explain on the screen what that is, so these intersections here where, if you guys can see my cursor, the private streets meet the new public street, you draw a 50-foot triangle emanating from each corner and you can't have structures over three feet tall within that triangle.
Okay.
And then there's 25-foot site triangles within the development itself.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I assumed was the reasoning. Now, if I look at B15, I see something that says, "Loss of four parking stalls to keep 11-foot lane width."
So this is related to one of the waivers that I mentioned, which is the alternative street design. So in order, and Kevin Van Catwick, please jump in if I misspeak here, but in order to keep the lane width wide enough and as close to the objective standard as reasonable without compromising the density of the project, the applicant is removing a few parking spots that were previously proposed for that location. And so there would be no parking in order to allow for the proper fire clearance and safety clearance. You wouldn't be able to park there as well as have two lanes.
Okay, let's go one step further. Because this project has narrower streets, how are you going to prevent people from parallel parking on this area where you've got narrow streets? Because that was one of the things that was brought up, that we don't have standard widths. Are you going to require them to paint it red so they don't park next to it? Because it's under an HOA and a private property. I was just concerned about it. I've seen where people park on both sides of narrower streets. You can't get a fire truck through it.
So yes, any locations where street parking is not permitted would be painted red. The fire district also reviews the building permit plans and signs off on them. They did review these initial plans and confirmed that the access appeared adequate. They also have conditions on allowing parking only on one side of the street and painting very clear in terms of what you're supposed to paint and mark on the sidewalk for streets that are below a certain width.
Are they also going to be required, I didn't read it in the project-specific conditions, to put up no parking signs so people really understand that? Rather than just red marks on the street?
So unless there's a specific fire requirement, I don't believe that signage beyond curb markings would be required. But, you know, I think again, that the fire district will be reviewing these plans and I think would comment on whatever is typical or required for marking where the fire lane is.
Okay, the next one is a very, something that I just read this past week in the newspaper about a rule that CalFire is working on. And that's called five-foot dispensable space. And they are basically saying you've got to have five foot from your building to any burnable item. And they recommend either gravel or cement. Now, if I look at the plans, these have only four feet between the ADU and the main building. So how are we going to get around the CalFire requirement or do we have to?
So I'm not aware of what specific situations that CalFire requirement may end up applying. Sometimes it's just in like a high fire or very high fire severity zone, which is typically not this area of town based on current mapping. But Contra Costa Fire District would ensure compliance with every, all the regulations. So I haven't heard that that would affect, you know, projects in this type of development right now.
Well, what really brought it to my attention is when I looked over at the fencing plan, they planned to put a wood fences at four-foot levels. That's what bothered me. And I've seen what a wood fence at a six-foot level happened when the place caught on fire. And that's what bothered me thinking about, here's six feet and the fence is already gone from the place and now CalFire's recommending five foot. So it was just a thought of a comment that I happened to read this past week. So it's just a note. Now on, back on Exhibit E, page 11, which is way back at the very end, we are talking about Republic Services. And somewhere they said, E... E13. Down at the bottom, it says, "For Meadow Lane, could we add a add-on lane similar to Populate?" Was that done?
So I'm trying to find that whole thread here, I apologize. Thank you. So my understanding is that was not added, as you can see on the plans, and that the applicant worked directly with Republic Services, which is evidenced later in this letter to come up with a trash collection plan. I believe on that one, it was to instruct all residents to move their bins to one side of the street. And then Republic accepted the plan with that agreement and indicated their approval.
I couldn't quite figure that out while reading this messages going back and forth.
Yeah, the final one, I'm trying to find it here. Yeah, apologies, I don't have it in front of me, but I do recall seeing in the full, and I apologize if maybe it got cut off, that they did indicate their approval of the plan.
Okay.
So apologies if that got cut out of the packet somehow.
As long as Republic Services is happy with that.
Yes. Oh, here we go, it's actually, it is at the bottom here, it's just a little bit out of order. I've confirmed everything with operations pending your approval to have the carts on one side of the street and that there's no commercial service at Parcel B. Republic Services approves the site plans.
Okay. And I'm, for a long time, very particular when I start looking at design. When I first joined the planning commission, I was only a planning commissioner. Now I got design review board added to it and I had to do a lot of studying about it. And then looking at the design on this, I wasn't really happy because the buildings all look alike, even though one may be a farmhouse and one may be, you just look at them and they're just look the same to me. Because you've got one that has a room that comes out, the next one has a room that comes out, the next one has a room that comes out and the only difference is a little bit of facade on it. I know I can't change that, but the fact is that somehow for staff, as far as I'm concerned, should have a little bit of variety in it because I don't, I've gone down streets and I couldn't tell which house was mine because they all looked exactly alike. And that's what got me to thinking about, can we change it a little bit? And I liked our design standard that did that. It gave you a little bit of variety. Setbacks and the way it looked from the street design, I like that with our design standard. I know we're limited because of the size of the lots and what the state has put onto us as to what we are required to get houses. But I'd just like to put that out, that I prefer a lot of variety in the way it looks on the street side. Saying that, I do support this project because it does one thing and that gives us low-income housing or lower-income housing. We need it, the people of California need it, and I think that is a good idea and I appreciate you coming forward with that. Thank you. Next.
I have questions for the applicant. Is the entire project going to be random or facilitated by the same HOA? Okay, and then how many of the ADU units will be under 800 square feet? All of them?
Just for ADA purposes, we have to speak into the microphone, thanks.
All ADUs will be under 800 square feet. So there's one plan, I think it's 730?
26.
26 square feet.
So that will house exactly one person?
It's a two-bedroom unit, so it could be two, three, however many people would fit in a two-bedroom unit.
At 800 feet, 800 square feet, okay. I also want to ask the applicant, do you guys happen to know Mr. Decker?
We have communicated with him. We've done extensive outreach, we reached out to the community, sent out letters and we have spoken with Andrew as well, yes.
I just find it interesting that there's over 100,000 people, is it, something like that in Antioch? Anyway. 30,000 people? Well, I'm glad that Mr. Decker showed up on your behalf. And I don't think it's by any coincidence that we're having this meeting and you guys are the neighbors to the previous agendized item, which I just think, I don't really believe in coincidence. I don't think that, I think there's, it's too much of a coincidence, really. As far as that goes to say, when we talk about affordability, Mr. Decker said that you are a leasing company and that's exactly what I see here. The way that affordability is created is you create an HOA where, if I'm not mistaken, the people who buy the property only own the four walls. They don't actually own the land that the residence is on, is that correct?
Yes, Bright Sky will own all of the property.
So basically, it's just controlled rent at a high price with the promise of owning something that you don't necessarily own. Which I see this over and over again and it's disheartening where it's like we create, it's like we create affordable housing and we almost do the right thing. So that's a little bit disheartening to me. And we have a very similar project at the end of Davison, corner of Davison and A Street, very similar condominiums, HOA, same, similar, not as nice of a layout, but basically with the same promise and principle. So that's all I want to say.
I have a question about the vesting tentative map. It says a condominium map could be recorded for the duplex. It says a condominium map could be recorded for the duplex for 46 through 71 on the eastern parcel creating condominiums. So is there an HOA? So the HOA, I just, I think he answered, you answered the question. There is going to be an HOA regardless if it's a condo or not, the HOA is required.
That is the condition of our plan, yes.
In regards to the affordability piece, the rent may be affordable. But is the HOA included in the rent? Because once you add HOA fees on top of the affordability, it starts to not be affordable.
This is our attorney, I'll let her address. She's drafted the Affordable Housing Agreement.
The details of this will be negotiated in the Affordable Housing Agreement, which will be recorded against title. And we have a draft that the city attorney has not reviewed yet. So I don't know exactly what it will say. As it currently exists, it describes the way the maximum rent will be calculated and what the property management will cover, things like maintenance. There's no, they're not paying extra for that each month. They have access to all of the community amenities. There is a section in the agreement that addresses the possibility of the units being offered individually for sale. And under state law, the calculation for the affordable kind of payment takes everything into consideration.
Thank you. That answered my question. And that was, I think, the only other question I had. I think the names of the streets are, they're good. I like those. So yeah, those are my only questions, my only questions.
I have one question for you regarding HOA. The HOA will be different for the people of the lower income or will be at par with everybody else?
It's one HOA, and everybody has access to the same amenities. Yeah.
But the HOA fees will be...
The fees?
Yeah.
I think how it works is that the, and I, this isn't something I focused on because the plan is to offer it for rent, and we're still negotiating that agreement. But I think the way it works is that the, whatever the monthly payment is that the purchaser would make in that scenario would contemplate their mortgage and their HOA fees. But I'm not, I don't know if you know offhand.
Not offhand.
Yeah. But it is something that will be addressed in the agreement, for sure.
So HOA will be added to the payment, whatever the payment is, the lease or purchase, whatever they're paying.
The household would qualify at a rate that is affordable based on, the math equation that you do for how much they can afford would take into account all of the expenses they're paying, including the HOA fees, as I understand it.
Okay. Let me ask it again. Is it going to be price-based?
Is what going to be price-based? I think you're asking...
ADUs will be price-based? So if somebody's paying $1,500 versus regular rent is $2,000?
The CCNRs haven't been drafted yet, so I don't know. But I do know that the total amount the purchaser would pay would contemplate whatever that fee is in addition to the amount they're paying to purchase the home.
All right. Thank you.
I have another question on the HOA. So being said, is there like a rate standard you guys are going to start off the HOA?
So when an HOA is prepared, then there's an HOA budget that's prepared. So we have no idea what that amount is going to be. It depends on the facilities. The CCNRs have to be drafted, and then a budget has to be prepared. So I have no idea what that would be at this point. But it's not like a set rate. It's prepared. It's project-specific.
I think my concern is that, I've seen a lot of communities like this here in Antioch, and the HOA tends to increase every year. And the communities are not as, well, we got presented or that we've seen. And then you have these people having affordable housing, but they're paying more HOA than their actual monthly rent.
Well, that's why it'll have to be addressed in the, specific to the Affordable Housing Agreement and in the future CCNRs. Dana's reminded me that the city and the city attorney will be reviewing and approving the CCNRs.
All right. I guess my question, I'm going to start, first question I guess I have is, surrounds the legal subdivision of the lots and how it, how it works with the ADUs and how that works with, you know, 13 of them deed restricted for low income. Now, initially, of course, you're planning on offering these, all the units, both the single-family residents, the ADUs, and the condominium units, all as rental. So for the time being, everything was basically under the control of the applicant as far as, you know, rent and costs and everything. But, so any deed restriction having to do with low income would be applied and enforced by Bright Star. However, one of the questions I had here regarding, you know, what could be happening in the future? I know it may not be your plan initially, but there is a possibility of actually offering the units for sale. So I guess the first question I have is, would that be just the condominium units that are offered for sale? Or each of the residences and the ADUs is, you know, that are part of this project?
In the event, in the future, if it was sold, there would be, there is condominium map that would be over the duplexes so that the duplex units could be sold individually. And then there's the, the single-family lots, which are already fee simple lots. And those could be sold, and they would be sold with the ADU and the primary unit on them. But there would be a deed restriction over the ADU portion specific to the affordable requirements on the ADU portion. And that would run on title for 55 years.
Okay. So, all right, so if this happens and it runs on title for 55 years. But what happens here if the lot, one of those individual residential lots, you know, with its corresponding ADU is sold as a unit? How do, how does the city enforce within that 55-year timeframe, you know, that this particular ADU remains low-income accessible?
Part of the Affordable Housing Agreement, there is a monitoring requirement. And so that's part of our question to the city, what is your program? What do you want us to do? So the city will dictate what that monitoring requirement is. But it will be very part of the Affordable Housing Agreement, which will be recorded.
Okay. I think that concludes my questions.
Does the city have a monitoring process in place? Because I'm thinking you go out, you type in your address, you make sure that as a tenant, I would be like, okay, I'm supposed to be paying this amount, and I want to make sure I'm not getting overcharged by the landlord. So is, what is the city's process for that?
So we have a housing division and the staff within that Terry House, you may have seen through the CDBG Committee. I'm not sure she's ever come here before, but she handles all of those sorts of agreements and monitoring for the city.
I guess my question is more tailored to what does monitoring look like? Does somebody go out there and just knock on the door and say, hey, are you guys paying what you should be paying?
So I'm not sure the exact specifics of her process. And I think it depends also, you know, she deals with different types of monitoring depending on the project and what the funding sources are and the different rules. So some of that comes through the agreement with the city attorney's office. But, so I don't want to speak out of turn on what her exact process is there, but she does follow all the monitoring.
But, okay, so we technically don't have like a written, like I can't go to a website and figure out what the process is. It's just what she's determining it is at the time, based on all the rules and regulations.
Yeah, so again, in the agreement, there is that monitoring piece. So that's kind of with the city attorney's side, so that's not something I've reviewed. So I just don't say, I can't say what it includes right now or what it may include after the city attorney reviews and maybe edits it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just wanted to say one last thing. When something is good and it's beneficial, I don't think, I think the product sells itself. I think it need not be said that there's no choice otherwise in the matter. If something is righteous and it's good and it's meant to be good for a community, I don't think it needs to be said that if it's, you know, the state's criteria, and you guys can't really say no to it. But with that being said, I'll move on to motion. On item 6-1, the Vineyard Crossings, PD 2024002, intersection of Phillips Lane and Oakley Road. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Antioch recommending that the City Council approve the proposed vesting tentative map, design review, and density bonus for the development of the Vineyards Crossing Residential Project, PD 2004-0002.
Kitty, may I have a roll call?
I second it.
You better give a second first.
Thank you, Chair Weber. Commissioner Spiker?
Aye.
Commissioner Sumon?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
No.
Vice Chairperson Jones?
Aye.
Chairperson Weber?
No.
The motion passes with four yeses to adopt the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Antioch recommending the City Council approves the proposed vesting tentative map, design review, density bonus for the development of the Vineyards Crossing Residential Project, PD 2024-0002. And that was Chair Weber and Commissioner Perez, but he no.
All right, that moves us on to the next part of our meeting, written oral communications. Are there any written or oral communications?
Yeah, I had a couple. So first off, we have a new website, as everyone knows. There's formatting issues. There's other issues. We're working on it. So bear with us on that. It's frustrating for all of us. I'm over there trying to use it too. So just understand we are trying to fix that. And you all should have received the invite for the Joint Planning Commission, City Council General Plan kickoff for October 21st. We'll be reaching out just to confirm attendance for that. And I just want to say, we're still confirming the exact details, but I believe that the event will actually be at the community centers and so it's a little bit bigger for everyone to have enough space. And then one other item is, I don't want to say for sure if we are not having an October 15th meeting, but I just wanted to say that I believe this may be Commissioner Martin's last meeting with us, assuming we don't have a 15th, but maybe. So I just wanted to say that he's served two full cycles on the Planning Commission. And we appreciate his service to the City of Antioch over all those years. He's served on the Planning Commission my entire time here at the City of Antioch, so I can't really imagine the commission without him. It's going to be a big change. I've always appreciated his thorough review of the projects, his taking the time to visit all the project site visits. I remember you went to every single faith-owned property for our overlay district to check it out. It was very committed. I've appreciated his insightful comments, and I know you'll be missed as a very valuable part of our commission.
Well, I will say that I got started on the Planning Commission back in 1988. And I've been through three different sessions with it. In other words, if you look at the rules, you can only serve two continuous terms. So I got split up the time. And I have thoroughly enjoyed it. And I will say that it has been wonderful to work with staff. They always seem to come to my defense when I can't figure something out. They will help me figure it out, and I really appreciate it. But I'm going to move on to other things. I was telling Zoe tonight that I just, the reason I missed last month's, the first meeting of the month, I was in Alaska, something that I had been trying to do for something like 12 years. And I finally did the inside passage on a small ship. And so I'm sorry I missed last meeting because I had some comments about it, but I abstained. But anyway, I really have enjoyed working with the city and trying to get my ideas of where I think the city should go out to the public as well as to staff and, of course, the City Council. So going to miss it in some ways, but not in others.
You will be missed, my man. Do we have any committee reports?
The Transplanting Committee did not meet.
Whoops. The next Planning Commission is scheduled for Wednesday, October 15th, possibly, 2025?
Yeah, we'll send out a notice either way, obviously.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second? Any second?
Second.
Kitty, a roll call vote, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair Weber. Commissioner Spiker?
Aye.
Commissioner Sumon?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Jones?
Aye.
Chairperson Weber?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously to adjourn at 8:12 PM.
Meeting adjourned.
Hey, I really appreciate you. It's been a pleasure. And I hope you enjoy your travels and your retirement.